8, 2025, School District of Middletown. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the May 8, 2025, meeting of the Enlarged City School District of Middletown. A reminder that this agenda was prepared in advance at tonight's meeting. The final agenda for tonight's meeting is subject to change at the time of the meeting. Any changes will be noted at the time they are made, and again, after the meeting on the public board minutes, which are available on the district's website. Ms. Avila, in Spanish.
Esta agenda fue preparada antes de la reunión de esta noche. La agenda final para la reunión de esta noche está sujeta a cambios en cualquier momento de la reunión. Cualquier cambio se anotará en el momento que se realice y nuevamente después de la reunión, en las actas de la cuenta pública están disponibles en el sitio del distrito web.
Thank you. We'd also like to remind everyone that translation and interpretation services are available during the meeting. If you need assistance, please let us know, and we'll be happy to accommodate you.
Nosotros gustaría recordar a todos que los servicios de traducción y interpretación están disponibles de tener esta reunión. Si necesitan asistencia, por favor, informanos y con gusto lo ayudamos.
Next on the agenda is our public hearing for the proposed 2025-2026 annual budget for the Enlarged City School District of Middletown. At this time, for our public meeting, if you could please rise and remove your hats and face the flag for our Pledge of Allegiance by Mr. Perino.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, Mrs. Monschery.
Mr. Estrada.
Here.
Mr. Moore. Mr. Perino. Mr. Rett. Ms. Romero. Ms. Tobiasin. Mr. Freddie Williams. Pastor Williams. Mr. Mitchell Williams. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to hand it off to Superintendent Creedon and our Assistant Superintendent for Business, Mr. Tuttle, for our budget presentation.
Hi, good evening, members of the board, President Estrada, public. Tonight is, we present one of the last, the last presentation of the year for our 2025-26 budget. By law, we must have a public hearing developed in 1997, and that requires us to have three components to our budget. One is administration, two is program, which is our instruction, and the third is capital. And as you can see, we presented those, two on March 6th and one on March 20th. This year's budget is $276 million, 5.23% increase over last year's spending budget. So it's an increase of almost $14 million, $13.7 million in the net change. So this year, our board has adopted the tax levy at 1.99%. That remains under the 2% tax cap. So we're looking at a tax levy of $1.4 million this year. Historically, if you look at the previous four years, we've been pretty consistent and pretty low going to the tax community. We had a 1%, zero. We actually decreased by $5 million and then a 0%. So we feel like the 1.99 is right in par for what we're going to be doing in the future. Just a recap of the whole budget overview, the adopted board overview. So the total proposed budget is $276,417,004. That has increased 13.7 million, and the budget increase percentage is 5.23 over last year, and the tax levy increase is 1.4 million. And again, the tax levy increase is 1.99. Now, we have a star on there because the local tax before the legalization rate is 1.99. Each person might not get 1.99. It may vary depending on your location and your municipality. The contingent rules, if the vote passes on the first time, we need 50 plus one because we are below the 2% tax cap with a 1.99. If we go to contingent, that means the budget fails less than 50% plus one. We need to go to the last year's contingent budget, which our levy was 73 million. The downside of all that is there's no additional budget requests can be honored, no equipment purchases except for health and safety, and the one that's going to really affect us is the applicable facilities charges that will be charged to all the groups and community events that happen inside the district. So for this year, the board has adopted three propositions that will be at the ballot, at the voting machines. Proposition one is the budget, and then there's three vacant board seats available this year. Proposition two is the 20 million, the 20-year $20 million, 2025 capital reserve, and then proposition three is the $45 million district-wide health, safety, and well-being renovations and alterations. Now, all three propositions have been adopted by the board, and we reviewed those extensively over several weeks of budget presentations. So again, the vote is on May 20th. If you have any questions, you can reach us at budget@ecsdm.org. Now it's open for public comment.
So before we get to the public comment portion, can board members during the public meeting ask questions beforehand? Okay, so we'll go around the table, then we'll provide an opportunity for the public to come up and either ask questions or make comment on the school budgets that are proposed. Mr. Moore?
Let's got one quick question, because I'm pretty sure many of our public will want to know. Can you just explain a little bit about the 50% plus one so they could get a clear understanding of what that actually means?
Yeah, okay, good question. So a budget normally has to pass with, by 50% of the votes, need to have a winning, but plus you need 50% plus one, so you can't have a tie. You can't have the same number equal, right? So you can't have 100 and 100. You would have to have 101 and 99 to have the 55 plus one. And if we were above the tax cap, we would need 60% plus one to get the voting through. That answer, did that help? Okay.
Good question. Mr. Perino.
Thank you, President Estrada. Actually, one point. Myself, President Estrada, and Mrs. Tobiasin were at a meeting last evening, and I was speaking to one of the superintendents there, along with John Williams was there, and he was very happy that his tax levy was 2.96, a local superintendent. So, very happy, but he said, well, it's below three. I don't know if you were involved in that conversation. I don't want to mention the district. It's a local district, though. So, that's my comment. I think this is an excellent budget. Everything goes up. Contracts go up, the price of supplies go up. When Bill Barnett buys a truck, even though on state bid, that goes up, and so on. Unfortunately, very little, if anything, comes down today. And I don't like it, but that's the way it is. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Perino, and I just wanted to add to that, his comments that, so when you see us at 1.99, which means we're below the 2% tax cap, the tax cap for our school district technically is much higher, which is...
Yeah, it's a little over, yeah, about 4.2%.
So technically, we could have provided a budget that went up to just under 4% and still have been considered underneath our tax cap with a vote of 50 plus one. But as Mr. Perino has admirably done over the years, is we make a concerted effort to get as minimal of a, of a tax increase as possible while still maintaining our programs. The good news for all of our students who are sitting in the audience today, no cut to programs, no cut to staff, and we were still able to maintain it at the 1.99. And you can see the track record on this slide of what's happened over the last few years. So in 2021, 22, 0%. We actually had a decrease in 22, 23, 0% again, in 23, 24, and 1%. Now, all of you know, inflation over the last year and a half to two years is running at 3, 4, and has been higher than that over the last few years. So remembering that we still have contractual obligations for all of our unions, as well as just the regular costs of doing business from an inflationary standpoint, and we're still able to do that. So good job to Mr. Tuttle and Ms. Creedon for being able to do that. Mr. Rett?
Good evening. No, we have had several discussions about this tax levy, and we're pretty comfortable with it, and we're very pleased with where it's going. So at this point, no questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rett. Mr. Tobiasin?
I just want to thank Mr. Tuttle for the wonderful job he did, because I was a little fearful when Mr. Smith was here, Jeff Smith, back in mid-winter there. So we worked, not we as, but you certainly worked hard, I'm going to say, to get that to a 1.99 increase. So my sincere appreciation, and to our superintendent also, and as someone else mentioned, the contractual obligations also play a role in the budget narrative. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tobiasin. Do not lose that fear.
Oh.
Because moving forward each and every year, this is a moving target.
Yep.
And as we all know, with the abolishment of the US State Department of Education, who knows where, what aids we'll be able to get from the federal government moving forward, and how the state applies that to each of the local districts. So we should still be fearful. We're thankful for this year, but still fearful for future years.
I would like to add one thing. So with this year's budget, we were able to once again not use any reserves or any of the unappropriated fund balance, which will be probably necessary in the future budgets, just to keep that in mind. Yeah.
Ms. Avila.
No, no questions.
I didn't forget you this time, right? Pastor Williams?
So, I'm gonna push back a little bit. I don't think we, I don't think we should be fearful. I think we should be concerned. The connotations of those two words sometimes can go, go a little different ways. I don't think we have anything to be afraid of, only because we are, Mr. Tuttle and this administration have done very well over the, over the years at drafting this budget and making sure that we as a district are in a fiscally sound position. So I'm concerned, but not afraid. I'll say this as well. Mr., Mr. Perino was talking about neighboring district. One of our neighboring districts has their, their tax levy at 4%. And so I think we're in a good place. Also, just as a rebuttal to something that was said after Monday night's meet the candidates night in concern, in connection to a statement about zero-based budgeting, in no way, shape, or form, as this, as this budget is being put together or other budgets, that every line item is not being looked at and examined. And I think that that's important to put that out there. I think some people think that zero-based budgeting means that you're, you're, you're starting from, you're, you're looking at a different, you know, looking at each line item, and that's in any budget. You look at every line item. What zero-based budgeting does is it makes you have to allocate every dollar for every place. So it gives you no ability to be able to deal with unforeseen circumstances. And so this budget, as, as I'm sure Mr. Tuttle has always done, has been looked at very, very closely. And we get the opportunity to look at it as closely as we want to. This is not just a trust factor. We trust them, but I think that the majority of us here do our due diligence in taking time to look through it and, and making sure that we understand what's going on. And, and so for the public, you have every opportunity to be able to come. If there's something that you don't understand about the budget, something you don't understand about how it's drafted, something you don't understand in the numbers, you have every opportunity to be able to ask those questions. And again, Mr. Tuttle put up the email that you can reach out to, but there's been sessions and different nights to be able to come and look at it. There you go. If you've got questions, you know, budget@ecsdm.org. So, thank you, thank you. I think we're, I think we're moving in the right direction, and this right direction will help us to be able to face whatever challenges we have to, to deal with in the coming years.
And to show you a little bit about the work that they did was, when the original budgets came out a couple of months ago, we were looking at about a 2.49, if I remember correctly. So they cut another $700,000 about, $700,000 from the budget to get it to the 1.99. So, Ms. Romero?
I think this is a very reasonable tax levy. Mr. Tuttle, great job. No questions.
Thank you. Mr. Freddie Williams?
More of a comment. Speaking as a parent in the taxpayer of the district, I appreciate the accessibility and the energy and the transparency you guys move with, with this budget. Like Pastor John said, that, you know, you guys are super accessible with information, and President Estrada made a great point that no programs are being cut, which is vital in this situation. So you guys are doing an amazing job, and I appreciate you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Freddie Williams. Now we'll move on to our public comment period of our public hearing, and this allows the public to ask any questions, make any comments regarding the budget. And this is a legal responsibility. We are required by state law to provide a public hearing on the school district budget. So if anybody at this time would like to come up and ask any questions or any comments regarding the budget for this year. No takers? Okay, we'll move on. A motion to adjourn our public hearing and move into our regular meeting. Moved by Mr. Tobiasin, seconded by Mr. Rett. Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries eight-zero. And now we'll move in and call to order our regularly scheduled meeting. And since we closed one meeting and opened another one, we are required to redo the opening. So at this time, if we could rise once again for our pledge of allegiance, and this time, Mrs. Romero.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Any moments of silence, Mr. Perino? No?
And now for the mission of the Enlarged City School District of Middletown. Mr. Moore?
Thank you. We strive to provide a fiscally sound educational opportunities in a safe environment that continuously supports our diverse student population. We will enable all students to graduate, to reach their full potential, and become lifelong learners, and to be competitive, productive members of society.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Roll call, Mrs. Monschery.
Mr. Estrada.
Here.
Mr. Moore. Mr. Perino. Mr. Rett. Ms. Romero. Ms. Tobiasin. Mr. Freddie Williams. Pastor Williams.
Here.
Mr. Mitchell Williams. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Monschery. I need approval for tonight's agenda.
So moved.
Moved by Pastor Williams, seconded by Mr. Freddie Williams. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries eight-zero. I need approval for the minutes of the regular meeting from April 24, 2025.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Rett, seconded by Pastor Williams. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries eight-zero. Now, moving on to our action items, our administrative approval of Personnel Memorandum 21A, numbers one and two.
So moved.
Moved by Pastor Williams, seconded by Mr. Moore. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries eight-zero. I need approval for Instructional Personnel Memorandum 21B, numbers one through 10.
So moved.
Moved by Ms. Tobiasin, seconded by Ms. Pastor Williams.
Yep.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries eight-zero. I need approval for Financial Memorandum 21D, numbers one through three. Moved by Mr. Rett. Seconded by Ms. Tobiasin. All those, any discussion? All right, so we'll finish this, and we'll go back. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries eight-zero. My apologies. Thank you, Mrs. Monschery, for reminding me. We need a motion to approve Non-Instructional Personnel Memorandum 21C, numbers one through seven.
So moved.
Moved by Pastor Williams. Seconded by Mr. Rett. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries eight-zero. I need approval for Special Services Memorandum 20E, numbers one and two. Moved by Mrs. Tobias, Ms. Tobiasin. Needed, uh, seconded by Mr. Moore. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any opposed? Motion carries eight zero. I need approval of Change Orders 15F, numbers one and two. Moved by Mr. Perino, seconded by Pastor Williams. Any discussion?
Yes. Are there any up, up changes in those, in, in the change orders?
Bill, would you like to give us an update on them?
Yes. Good evening. We have two change orders tonight. The first is to, to provide technology infrastructure upgrades to the existing building in Area A. And the second is a credit for kitchen equipment deleted from the scope.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Any other discussion?
So essentially, essentially, the kitchen equipment deleted from the scope is bringing money back. Okay. Just, just making that clear for the public.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries eight zero. I need approval of Resolution for Employee Number 08668. Moved by Ms. Tobiasin. Seconded by Mr. Rett. Some of these items would have been discussed in executive session, so the board's aware of them. Any further discussion? That's not executive session material. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries eight zero. I need approval for Resolution of Employee Number 08235.
So moved.
Moved by Pastor Williams.
Seconded on that.
Seconded by Mr. Perino. Any discussion, non-executive material? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries eight zero. There was, in addition to our agenda, letter I, a motion to approve Confidential Settlement Agreement. I need a motion.
So moved.
Moved by Pastor Williams. Seconded by Mr. Moore. This was discussed in executive session. Any further discussion? That's not executive session material.
Sure.
All those in favor? No, because it was included before we went into, but good question. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries eight zero. All right. That concludes our action items for our business meeting. And we'll move on now to our board member recognitions and our community updates. And I'm gonna hand it off to Ms. Creedon.
Great. Thank you so much. Thank you, Board of Trustees and School Community, for giving me an opportunity tonight to share a little bit about what happened last night, which is a wonderful celebration for our Board of Trustees and School Community. And I think there's some pictures that accompany the event last night. So, the Mid-Hudson School Study Council provides an opportunity for school districts to nominate individuals for awards representing their service to a school community. The Golden Apple Award is a prestigious recognition presented by the Mid-Hudson School Study Council to honor exceptional educators, board members, and community members who have dedicated 50 years or more to the field of education. This accolade celebrates individuals whose enduring commitment and outstanding contributions have significantly enriched the educational landscape in Hudson Valley and more specifically for us here in Middletown. Mr. Perino is a distinguished and unwavering dedicated servant to public education. His dedication spans nearly six decades. And it is with great pride that we nominated him for this prestigious recognition, which he received last night. Mr. Perino has been an integral part of the public education landscape in our community since 1966. Over the years, he's held key roles as an educator and administrator, 35 years dedicated to the Enlarged City School District of Middletown, and for over 25 years, a trustee on the school board. He retired from the profession and the same year is when he began his volunteer service to the school community. For 59 years, he has dedicated his life to improving outcomes for young people. Throughout this time, he has dedicated, demonstrated an unparalleled commitment to fostering of level learning, focusing on a passion of literacy and putting books into the hands of our young people. His tireless advocacy for school libraries, reading programs, and educational excellence has left an indelible mark on the landscape of this region and Middletown. He has been instrumental in ensuring that our scholars have access to resources and the support they need to be lifelong learners. And it was an honor to have Mr. Perino win the Golden Apple Award on behalf of the school district.
And, you know, we have a lot of students in the audience. How many students out there went to Presidential Park as their elementary? Look at that. So, all of you know that the library at Presidential Park is called the Perino Family Library. So, in addition to the years of service that Mr. Perino has given to the school district as an educator and as a board member, his mom was an integral part of education and his father here at Middletown. So, their legacy, that family's legacy in Middletown goes back more than 100 years. And that's the reason why we named the library at Presidential Park after his family. So, I think people should know that.
We were lucky to collaborate with Orange Ulster BOCs on a nomination for an additional award that the Mid-Hudson School Study Council presented for excellence in school board service. This award is presented annually to recognize outstanding contributions by school board members in Hudson Valley. It honors individuals who have worked tirelessly over multiple years to demonstrate exceptional leadership, volunteerism, dedication, and generally service to public education. Ed Estrada had the honor of winning this award last evening, and we were proud for him to, in part, represent the Enlarged City School District of Middletown. Ed, the voice of Middletown, is truly an exceptional individual who selflessly serves. He is a strong leader with an unwavering commitment to educational advancement. And the support that he's provided to this district and the boards that he serves on across our county have left a long-lasting impact on many school communities, not just Middletown's. Ed's dedication to improving the lives of young people and his continuous support for the communities that surround us is nothing short of inspiring. As Board President of Middletown City School District's Board of Trustees and a board member of the Orange Ulster BOCs Board of Education, a board member of the Cornell Cooperative Extension, and a board member of Inspire, I think I got all of them, Ed has devoted countless, countless, countless hours away from his family to make a difference for young people everywhere and school communities. His leadership across these organizations shows his diverse skills and his deep commitment in the betterment of both education and raising a community up. What sets Ed apart is not only his dedication to improving educational outcomes, but also the ethical standards and the moral compass with which he does each and every component of his work. He approaches every role with integrity, humility, and a collaborative mindset. His ability to unite people around a common cause and inspire others to take action is a testament to his trustworthiness and the influence that he has on many. He's earned the respect of his colleagues and his peers as well as of the entire school community and the communities that he serves. Thank you very much, Ed. Congratulations.
Thank you, everybody. It was an honor to, to stand on that stage with Mr. Perino, that's for sure. So, we'll move on to our next. So, we want to do the spring awards after public participation? Oh, that was, okay. So, so we'll do our board member community up? Yeah, I, I think, so what we'd like to do is, knowing that they have valuable time and they have school tomorrow, that maybe we'll just, I'd like a motion to amend the agenda to move items under 12A, B, C, and D to this point of our meeting. And then, we'll do public participation right after that and carry it. So, I'll need a motion to amend the agenda. Moved by Pastor Williams, seconded by Mr. Rett. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So, we'll move on to our student recognition.
Great. Thank you very much. Well, we are excited to have the music department here this evening to remind our school community that excellence lives inside all of our programs. And so, we are celebrating the power of music in our schools with some wonderful performances tonight. So, we'll give our young people, I'm gonna ask board members if they can, trustees and cabinet members if they can sit out there. And we'll allow our young people to get set up and get started.
Good evening. My name's Amanda Mida. I am lucky enough to be the K-12 Music Department Chair here at Middletown. I teach over at Twin Towers. And in my spare time, I travel around and I visit all the different schools and get to meet all our wonderful musicians all over. So, we're going to start tonight with, wait, I practiced. Alma Ochang? Close? Yes? I'm looking for approval from her family. She attends Maple Hill Elementary School. She's a fifth grader. She plays the violin. And she's going to play Gavat from Mignon for us. My gosh. Sorry. I, I just learned a fun fact about Alma. Alma, she also just performed two weeks ago in all-county chorus. So, she was one of the few musicians selected from around the county to perform out in Warwick. And then, she's also in chorus, and she was in all-district orchestra. So, she doesn't just play the violin. Next, I'm going to invite up Christopher Alvarez, Jackson Howell, and Carter Yanni from Twin Towers Middle School. They're all in seventh grade. They are all, they're going to play a baritone sax trio for us, which is a rare treat. I don't know if I've ever seen a baritone sax trio performed. So, this is exciting. Between them, they also participate in Midi Mariachi Ensemble, jazz band, band, chorus, and modern band. Come on up, double.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, you do it. You do it. I owe you one. Yes. All right. Take a comfy chair. All right. All right.
Mama mia, mama mia. Mia, mama mia. Mama mia, mama mia, papia.
I just learned a fun fact about Alma. Alma, she also just performed two weeks ago in all county chorus. So she was one of the few musicians selected from around the county to perform out in Warwick. And then she's also in chorus and she was in all district orchestra. So she doesn't just play the violin. Next, I'm going to invite up Christopher Alvarez, Jackson Howell, and Carter Yanni from Twin Towers Middle School. They're all in 7th grade. They are all, they're going to play a baritone sax trio for us, which is a rare treat. I don't know if I've ever seen a baritone sax trio performed. So this is exciting. Between them, they also participate in Midi Mariachi Ensemble, jazz band, band, chorus, and modern band. Come on up, double. Okay. Next, I'd like to invite Zachary Pierre up to perform. He is a senior, much to my disappointment, here at the high school. Zachary was also one of our two students who performed in the all-state ensembles this year. So him, along with Vincenza Elia, went up and they performed in Rochester in December. In order to earn that honor, they have to perform a Level 6 All-State Nisma solo the previous year. So, and then we also had an alternate selected, Jay Royas, which just means there wasn't room for him on the stage. Zachary will be performing a movement from one of the Bach cello suites on the viola tonight. So I should also mention that Zachary was also selected to perform in the all-state chorus, but chose to perform in the orchestra. And he'll be attending Ithaca College of Music. I don't know, they just changed their name. So Ithaca College, they changed their name of the music school. He'll be studying viola performance and math. Yeah, cool. And so for our final performance tonight, I'd like to invite the chamber orchestra onstage under the direction of Mrs. Gugliotta. Between them, not only do they just perform in chamber orchestra, they are also members of jazz band, pipers, many of them were in the musical last week, in the pit orchestra, mariachi ensemble, chorus, and band. So they're very busy.
I moved there, so maybe it's been stuck.
Oh, we thought you might know me a lot of them. Might be a screen.
Hi, good evening. You know what? I gotta say, guys, I'm kinda, I'm kinda tired. It's like, it's really a crazy time of year. And, you know, I mean, it is Teacher Appreciation Week and all. I kinda wanna just take the night off. Zach, here. Yeah, come on up. Come on up. Yeah. Yeah, yeah, you do it. You do it. I owe you one. Okay. Yes. All right. Take a comfy chair. All right. Yeah. All right.
Mama mia, mama mia.
Mama mia, mama mia. Mia, mama mia. Mama mia, mama mia, papia.
Mama mia, mama mia. Mia, mama mia. Mama mia, mama mia, papia.
Mama mia, mama mia. Mia, mama mia. Mama mia, mama mia, papia.
I just learned a fun fact about Alma. Alma, she also just performed two weeks ago in all county chorus. So she was one of the few musicians selected from around the county to perform out in Warwick. And then she's also in chorus and she was in all district orchestra. So she doesn't just play the violin. Next, I'm going to invite up Christopher Alvarez, Jackson Howell, and Carter Yanni from Twin Towers Middle School. They're all in 7th grade. They are all, they're going to play a baritone sax trio for us, which is a rare treat. I don't know if I've ever seen a baritone sax trio performed. So this is exciting. Between them, they also participate in Midi Mariachi Ensemble, jazz band, band, chorus, and modern band. Come on up, double. Okay. Next, I'd like to invite Zachary Pierre up to perform. He is a senior, much to my disappointment, here at the high school. Zachary was also one of our two students who performed in the all-state ensembles this year. So him, along with Vincenza Elia, went up and they performed in Rochester in December. In order to earn that honor, they have to perform a Level 6 All-State Nisma solo the previous year. So, and then we also had an alternate selected, Jay Royas, which just means there wasn't room for him on the stage. Zachary will be performing a movement from one of the Bach cello suites on the viola tonight. So I should also mention that Zachary was also selected to perform in the all-state chorus, but chose to perform in the orchestra. And he'll be attending Ithaca College of Music. I don't know, they just changed their name. So Ithaca College, they changed their name of the music school. He'll be studying viola performance and math. Yeah, cool. And so for our final performance tonight, I'd like to invite the chamber orchestra onstage under the direction of Mrs. Gugliotta. Between them, not only do they just perform in chamber orchestra, they are also members of jazz band, pipers, many of them were in the musical last week, in the pit orchestra, mariachi ensemble, chorus, and band. So they're very busy. I moved there, so maybe it's been stuck.
Hi, good evening. You know what? I gotta say, guys, I'm kinda, I'm kinda tired. It's like, it's really a crazy time of year. And, you know, I mean, it is Teacher Appreciation Week and all. I kinda wanna just take the night off. Zach, here. Yeah, come on up. Come on up. Yeah. Yeah, yeah, you do it. You do it. I owe you one. Okay. Yes. All right. Take a comfy chair. All right. Yeah. You do it. You do it. I owe you one. Okay. Yes. All right. Take a comfy chair. All right. Yeah. All right.
Mama mia, mama mia. Mia, mama mia. Mama mia, mama mia, papia.
Mama mia, mama mia. Mia, mama mia. Papa mia.
Mama mia, mama mia. Mia, mama mia. Mama mia, mama mia, papia.
Mama mia, mama mia. Mia, mama mia. Mama mia, mama mia, papia.
Mama mia, mama mia. Mia, mama mia. Papa mia.
Mama mia, mama mia. Mia, mama mia. Mama mia, mama mia, papia.
Mama mia, mama mia. Mia, mama mia. Mama mia, mama mia, papia.
Mama mia, mama mia. Mia, mama mia. Papa mia.
Mama mia, mama mia. Mia, mama mia. Papa mia.
Mama mia, mama mia. Mia, mama mia. Papa mia.
Mama mia, mama mia. Mia, mama mia. Papa mia.
Mama mia, mama mia. Mia, mama mia. Papa mia.
Mama mia, mama mia. Mia, mama mia. Papa mia.
Mama mia, mama mia. Mia, mama mia. Papa mia.
Mama mia, mama mia. Mia, mama mia. Papa mia.
Mama mia, mama mia. Mia, mama mia. Papa mia.
Mama mia, mama mia. Mia, mama mia. Papa mia.
Mama mia, mama mia. Mia, mama mia. Papa mia.
Mama mia, mama mia. Mia, mama mia. Papa mia.
Mama mia, mama mia. Mia, mama mia. Papa mia.
Mama mia, mama mia. Mia, mama mia. Papa mia.
Mama mia, mama mia. Mia, mama mia. Papa mia.
Mama mia, mama mia. Mia, mama mia. Papa mia.
Mama mia, mama mia. Mia, mama mia. Papa mia.
Mama mia, mama mia. Mia, mama mia. Papa mia.
Mama mia, mama mia. Mia, mama mia. Papa mia.
Mama mia, mama mia. Mia, mama mia. Papa mia.
Mama mia, mama mia. Mia, mama mia. Papa mia.
Mama mia, mama mia. Mia, mama mia. Papa mia.
Mama mia, mama mia. Mia, mama mia. Papa mia.
Mama mia, mama mia. Mia, mama mia.
Papa mia.
Mama mia, mama mia. Mia, mama mia. Papa mia.
Mama mia, mama mia. Mia, mama mia. Papa mia.
Mama mia, mama mia. Mia, mama mia. Papa mia.
Mama mia, mama mia. Mia, mama mia.
Mama mia, mama mia. Mia, mama mia. Papa mia.
Mama mia, mama mia. Mia, mama mia. Papa mia.
Mama mia, mama mia. Mia, mama mia.
Mama mia, mama mia. Mia, mama mia.
Mama mia, mama mia. Mia, mama mia.
Mama mia, mama mia.
Mama mia, mama mia. Mia, mama mia. Papa mia.
Mama mia, mama mia. Mia, mama mia. Papa mia.
Mama mia, mama mia. Mia, mama mia. Papa mia.
Mama mia, mama mia. Mia, mama mia. Papa mia.
Mama mia, mama mia. Mia, mama mia. Papa mia.
Mama mia, mama mia. Mia, mama mia. Papa mia.
Mama mia, mama mia. Mia, mama mia.
Papa mia.
Mama mia, mama mia. Mia, mama mia. Papa mia.
Mama mia, mama mia. Mia, mama mia. Papa mia.
Mama mia, mama mia. Mia, mama mia. Papa mia.
Mama mia, mama mia. Mia, mama mia. Papa mia.
Mama mia, mama mia. Mia, mama mia. Papa mia.
Mama mia, mama mia. Mia, mama mia. Papa mia.
Mama mia, mama mia. Mia, mama mia. Papa mia.
Mama mia, mama mia. Mia, mama mia. Papa mia.
Mama mia, mama mia. Mia, mama mia.
Papa mia.
Good evening, Ms. Creedon, President Estrada, members of the Board of Education and Middletown School community. Thank you for welcoming us here tonight. I am going to turn it over to our advisors of our youth in government and youth and government to share a little bit about the amazing accomplishments and really incredible experiences that our scholars have had this year with the club program. So without further ado, I'll turn it over to Ms. Tierney Lynch and Ms. Jen Kinney.
So before we, you know, so there's a, the local youth in government, I'm Jen Kinney also, thank you, sorry, Ms. Lynch, who just came from her game. Youth in government is our local youth, youth government program. Those students work with students that are also part of the Orange Ulster Bocys, so those school districts that participate in that. And then youth and government is a partnership with our local Y. So we spend our fall doing youth in government and then our winter and spring doing youth and government. Back in the fall, we got ready for two, two different conventions, the Platform Convention and the Steering Convention. At the Platform Convention, we had two of our planks pass. So Gabby Soto and Carol Cartucci had their plank passed as well as Anthony Barone and Antonio Contreras. Then in November, we attended the Steering Convention at NFA in which we had four of our delegates serve as Chair and Secretary of the two separate parties. So it's almost as if it's the two separate chambers of Congress. And then we had Sophia Barone, a first-year member, when Congressperson B, right? So she presented her bill, speech, and she was elected Congressperson. Those five members will be attending a special trip to Albany on May 20th where they get a tour of the Capitol Building and the New York State Museum. So we're very excited to participate in that. That's also if you guys turn in your permission slips. And then we took the youth and government delegation to the New York State Conference in Albany. This year has been very much a year of growth and learning. So last year, I think Ms. Lynch and the former advisor took 12 delegates. This year, we took 23. So it was a large undertaking. And not only did we take a sizable delegation, but we also did an awesome job at the conference. Yeah, so it was the largest conference that the YMCA has had in a very long time. We had the entire hotel to just the YMCA Youth and Government Program. So there was about 800 other stu-, or there was 800 students from all over New York State participating in this conference. And with that, we had three of our bills passed and signed by the youth governor. We also won outstanding bill for the distribution of EpiPens. And it was a very, like, awesome moment to see our delegates go and present their bills on the, on the floor of the Capitol Building. It was, it was awesome. It was very exciting for us, very exciting for them. We also had our first-year attorney, Reese Quinlan, won her appeal for her client. We had students participate as the committee chairperson and the deputy pro tempore of the Senate. We also have one of our delegates who was our outstanding delegate for our delegation. So it was very exciting, a big deal for us and for the delegation as a whole. In April, as part of the youth in government, we also were able to take seven of our scholars to the, to County Service Day where they have the opportunity to shadow different members of our county government. So we had two students go to the Supreme Court. We had a student shadow emergency services, legislative, the mental health department, community development, and public work. So they all go out, they all do the things, and then come back and they all tell us about what they did that day. And it was exciting. It was learning for us, learning for them. And they all were also afforded an opportunity to apply for an internship through the Orange County Youth Bureau. Looking ahead, right, what's next for these guys? We are graduating some of our members, so we wish them all well on their future endeavors. But some of our returning members are going to be participating in some big things. So Anthony Barone and Antonio Contreras were both accepted to Kona, the YMCA's Conference on National Affairs this summer. That is in North Carolina, right? So they will be traveling first from the Changemaker Summit, that's also through the YMCA. And this Changemaker Summit is through their service learning project. So they were awarded the servant learning pin at the conference for doing 15 hours of community service and two hours of educational learning programs. So that had, they put their project through to the YMCA and they are going to be representing all of New York State at the Changemaker Summit. So their project is the New York State project. So it's, it's a big deal. That program is national and they'll be going to Orlando, Florida. And then the Kona Conference is regional, so that's all of the East Coast that participates in Kona. So a big deal for those two. Yeah, I'm wrong? I haven't flipped? Okay, no? They're both national? Oh, they're both national, so even bigger. And then Antonio will be serving as Youth Lieutenant Governor next year. So he will be... be the one signing bills that pass at the state conference. So we're very excited for him. All right, so.
And is it a secret, or what is their service learning project?
Do you guys want to come up and talk about your service learning project? All right.
As long as you're not giving out any trade secrets to the other states.
No, of course.
So basically, the idea of the Changemakers Program is from each state, two delegates go, and they present in Orlando their service learning project, sort of. And if you win, you get a $5,000 grant.
For the project, to make it happen.
And I'm sure Antonio would love to explain.
Our specific project was, many Youth in Government delegates, or just people who go to the YMCA in general, are able to apply to this Changemakers Project by submitting their sort of like ideal and planned-out project proposition for their local community. It's not for like the whole entire state, but just an issue that's been impacting their local community. So we chose impaired driving, because that's been an issue that's been happening in Orange County, and we thought that we could address some things that would maybe lower the accidents that are caused because of this impairment T driving. So we're still working out a presentation that we have to present to quite a few people in Orlando, Florida, but we really hope everything goes well, and we're gonna try to make a difference in this driving issue that we're now facing.
Awesome. Thank you.
So what we're gonna do now is we just want to recognize our delegation, those members that are here, with certificates from Youth in Government, as well as a certificate from Youth and Government. So I'm gonna hand out cords, and Ms. Lynch is going to hand out your certificates.
And the cords were given by the YMCA Conference to give to our graduating seniors for our graduation. Anthony Barone. Sophia Barone. Exar Beltran Medina. Who is one of our seniors. Carol Cartucci. Another senior. Antonio Contreras. Ephraim Denio Jr. Paloma De Rosier. Alan Rivera Hernandez. Lawrence Hendrickson. Emily McKay, who is also just in the orchestra. Matthew McKay, also in the orchestra. Trinity Prilo. Reese Quinlan. Ethan Sartillo. And Gabrielle Soto.
We just wanted to thank the board, our administration here at the high school, and at Central Office for helping us get through this year. Like I said, learning year, growing year. There's been a lot of different hiccups, and we appreciate all the help that we've received. The only thing that's not in here, and I'm gonna do a shameless plug, we are doing a fundraiser at Buffalo Wild Wings on Tuesday. Texas Roadhouse, we did one at Buffalo Wild Wings. It's been a long, again, it's teacher appreciation, have a little. But Texas Roadhouse, Tuesday, from three to ten, we get 10% of your check. So please go out, help us, and help grow this program even more. Thank you.
Thank you. How many of the students, the seniors, are interested in taking government courses or doing something with what you just learned through Youth in Government moving forward? All right, good to know. Don't forget us.
Some law, I think we have some future lawyers in the House, some future attorneys. Thank you.
We're gonna need you guys now that what's going on in Washington, we could use you guys down there, so.
Give us a couple of years.
I think I'm up all night, so.
And next up, I think we're just gonna transition right into the school field trip experience, right?
Yeah, all night. I think I'm your entertainment the rest of the evening. We're really excited. I just wanna introduce, for those of you that don't know, this is Emily Landrigan. She is our media library specialist here at Middletown High School and the department chairperson. We're really excited, because we're gonna share some highlights from a recent author visit that had a really profound impact on our scholars and our school community. Mr. Jason Reynolds, he's a celebrated author known for his ability to engage young readers. And for those who are unfamiliar with Jason Reynolds, he's a National Book Award finalist and the author of several bestselling titles, such as A Party for Langston and For Everyone. His work often addresses themes of identity, race, and the power of storytelling. The communications team, who supported us in so many ways leading up to, during, and after the visit from author Jason Reynolds, put together a beautiful highlight reel that we'd like to share tonight, debut it for the school community.
At the end of March, to close out our month-long Celebration of Middies Love to Read, we had New York Times bestselling author Jason Reynolds come in.
We were very lucky to receive a generous donation from a community member, and Mrs. Landrigan came to me with this big idea.
I wanna get Jason Reynolds to come here. And I think she thought I was joking.
I thought she was a little crazy. Jason Reynolds is really famous. Didn't know that we could pull it off, but like we do in Middletown, we dream big.
She looked at me and said, whatever you need from me to make it happen.
My name is Jason Reynolds. I'm an author, specifically of All American Boys, Ghost, Spider-Man.
My dream has been to have Jason Reynolds come speak to Middletown students. Two different assemblies happened during the day. About a thousand scholars were able to see Jason Reynolds live speak.
I spoke to an auditorium full of young people, just talking about my story, my life, my ideas, creativity.
Dr. Rudine Sims Bishop says that books should be mirrors, windows, and sliding glass doors, meaning that people who are reading should be able to see themselves in books, should be able to step into other cultures and worlds, and Jason exemplifies that.
It's really important that scholars see authors who are very diverse. Scholars were so excited. It was, you could feel it in the air.
Scholars really seemed to enjoy the entire day. We had lots of books in hands with lots of smiles on faces. Afterwards, for days, scholars were talking about how wonderful it was.
They kept telling me Jason Reynolds is the GOAT.
A lot of times, we hear that an athlete is the GOAT, and it's fun that this time they're talking about somebody who writes books for a living.
I think the kids leaving the auditorium today, I hope they left feeling like giants, you know?
After Jason visited, I cannot keep his books on the shelves.
For your young writer out there, just tell your story, right? Start exactly where you are. You are enough already. If you begin there, you'll get to where you're going.
In Middletown, we dream big, and so I shoot for the stars, and luckily, my dream was able to come true.
This was an incredible day, and we definitely couldn't have done it alone. The Middletown High School English teachers, the librarians from across the district, the elementary and middle school humanities instructional leaders, the MHS security staff, our entire admin team, so many others, it was truly a team effort. We would like to send a special thank you to the Special Services Administrative Team, who not only supported us on the day of, but they purchased books for all of the scholars to keep during the presentations. Titles that they purchased include Long Way Down, For Everyone, and Ghost. And the purchasing of these books resparked the excitement of reading and writing throughout the hallways of Middletown High School, proving that middies definitely love to read. And the feedback from scholars and educators has really been overwhelmingly positive. Students are still talking about it. We showed a few examples of some of the feedback from our scholars.
We cannot thank the board and our central administration team enough for making this experience happen for our scholars. As a thank you, you all have signed copies of Jason Reynolds' books, and we also have large signed posters of two books, one for here at Middletown High School and one for the Board of Education Office as well. So here's to continuing to shoot for the stars, so thank you.
Can I say something real quick? So I had the profound privilege, along with a few others, Mr. Rep was there as well. It was an absolute amazing time, and I think that one of the best moments, and, you know, and so you guys know that I developed a special connection with Jason while we were there, and so he and I have remained in touch ever since he's been here. And so when I'm in Baltimore, we're hooking up. But one of the best parts of that time, and this is what he enjoyed the most, was when we were in that back room with the small group, and he was able to have an intimate conversation with them. Because he said, one of the things he said, and you guys know this, you know, being out in front of the crowd was out of his comfort zone, being out in the front. He did well, you'd never know. But those intimate conversations and answering questions with our scholars in the back room was absolutely amazing. And so I wanna applaud you guys for bringing him here, allowing our scholars to have this opportunity to connect with somebody who's relevant for what they read. And, you know, if you don't know any of his books, and I knew his books a while before, but if you don't know any of his books, everybody knows Spider-Man, Miles Morales. So that in and of itself was huge, so congratulations, congratulations. I can't wait till the next, the big author you bring in.
And the scholars in that room won a contest, and all of the work that they submitted to win that contest is actually hanging right behind us. So if you wanna check it out, the Write With Purpose, Create Art and Take Action is what won them that opportunity.
It was huge, it's huge. When I go to lunch with him, I'll send you guys some pictures.
Thank you.
Thank you, Pastor Williams, Mr. Rep.
Yes, I'm gonna piggyback on what Pastor John said. It was a great opportunity to be here, to just look at the students, you know, they were so excited about just someone that they can identify with. And, you know, he was very passionate, and I gotta tell Emily. Emily did an incredible job of just interviewing and just, you know, asking them specific questions that all the students probably were interested in getting answers to. But in my years, in my many years of education, this was one of those crowning moments. It was just looking at the students and their interest in reading about his books. I read Ghost, and I was so excited about it, I was sharing with a couple of people that, just when I got to the end, I was wanting to see what's gonna happen. And so now, I gotta get Fatima, and I gotta get the rest of the story. But again, great job, you guys, really great job.
And so Emily and Frado have another career after they're done here as interviewers.
Agreed.
You guys, both you and Frado did an excellent job in facilitating those conversations.
Thank you, Mr. Rep and Ms. Avila.
Great job, great.
I wasn't able to see Jason Reynolds, but I love like the feedback hearing from everybody in the school, because it's like giving a light to kids saying like, just write, or just do something, 'cause you don't know what could come out of it, as it is with art, had we had the last meeting, a couple meetings ago, and like with writing as well. It gives students to see that opportunity, that the little things that they like to do, there is something, you could become big at it, and you just never know. 'Cause students, and like also seeing somebody who is like, looks like an everyday person, you're not gonna, like, if he would just walk past, if you didn't like Google him, you would be like, that's just another person. But deep down, like, if you're studying him and all that, you would see that he has influentialism all around, and then especially his books, being the main books now, like, selling out all the time, that are always checked out, that's like showing something to students that, you know, school sometimes always has like a little fun part. 'Cause I think like, when we're so deep in with like homework and all the works that we have to do, and you have like a little achievement, a little reward of seeing somebody famous and all, it brings out more creativity to the students, and not just only trying to be good academically if they can have, like, you know, having that academic and then seeing that there's a reward with seeing somebody famous, it's like very helpful for students. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Avila. Any other comments or questions, Mr. Moore?
I have a quick one. I see that you're a big believer in having a dream, right? And having that dream come to fruition. So what will be your next dream, what will be your next author that you want us to be able to embark on?
We're gonna let Rachel take this one.
Okay.
We've spent a lot of time researching this and thinking about it. You know, if we could, I mean, do we drop names?
Sure.
We would love Nick Stone to come. Yeah, this is our dream, our second dream. We have a lot of dreams. We have like actually a Google Doc that we share. We have a doc.
Now that you got Mr. Reynolds, maybe he can help out.
Now that we got the GOAT.
He's part of a, he's part of a writer's group, probably, so maybe.
Maybe we bring him back. We already got our connection from Mr. Williams.
We were very lucky that this was made possible because of an anonymous donation from someone in the community, and we feel like, you know, we wanted to make sure that we honor, we don't know who the individual is, but if their family is out there, we hope they feel honored that their gift led to really an inspiration to read and write in Middletown High School. We feel it was funds well spent.
So that was an anonymous donation?
We don't know.
Anonymous to us. But I think Mr. Tuttle has, you know, the T.
Thank you very much.
I have something real quick.
Mr. Williams and then Ms. Creedon.
Yep, so this is, I mean, I missed it, but it seems like this was an awesome, awesome event. And reading and writing creates a whole different atmosphere, so some kids, right? I'm a coach, so, you know, I've coached flag football, basketball, many sports, but not everybody's gonna do a sport. And so the reading and writing is so essential to life in general, right? It's, if you don't have practice, you can go and pick up a book, and it'll take you to a whole new world, right? Or you can get your thoughts out on paper, and I just think this is awesome, this is awesome, awesome. I definitely wanna tap in and tune into the next one. I'm sorry, I missed this one, but that's awesome. He's a super, super intelligent guy that I know a little about, a little bit about, within like the last couple of months, it's funny, 'cause I just started researching him. One of my employees at my shop is a super Marvel and DC, so he was bringing him up in the conversation, so when I tell him tomorrow, he's gonna lose his mind. So he's gonna try to find his way, wiggle his way into the event, but this is awesome. Reading and writing is so vital to our future and generations, so I just wanna thank you guys for this. Thank you.
Good point, Mr. Williams, thank you. Ms. Creedon.
I just wanted to acknowledge all of the hard work that goes into experiences like these, and make sure that our entire school community recognizes that we hear their voices and their feedback matters. You know, we set out in our strategic plan to acknowledge that our families said we wanted more field trips, more experiences. And what we did was say that we feel like the best way that we could honor that feedback and provide experiences, not just for small groups of kids, but for entire schools, was to bring rich, you know, experiences into our schools and make the field trips happen inside our buildings. And the teams worked really, really hard on the instructional side with folks like Mrs. Landrigan and Mrs. Koontz and the rest of the instructional team, and Mrs. Adoma, to continue to bring these forth, so that we don't only have to go outside the walls of these schools to experience things, there are certainly times and places for those, and those are great. But with this type of experience, the entire school community got to participate in a field trip, which was something very unusual, so I wanna thank them for all their hard work. It was a really wonderful day that was enjoyed. It was a really wonderful day that was enjoyed, not just by our young people here, but by the adults, you know, as well. So, thank you.
Yeah, I also feel, I speak for the board members, that you guys keep dreaming because whatever ideals you have, don't hesitate to rent them by us, you know, we'll see what we can do to bring those dreams forth for you.
Thank you. We'll share our whole Google Doc with you.
Get ready.
Thank you, Mr. Rep, Ms. Tobiasin.
Thank you very much. I'm going to put on an old hat. When I was School Library System Director for our industrial BOSsies, I brought in a coser for authors. I'm not sure what happened. I think it went to Sullivan County, but also provided for Orange County schools. If that coser is still in existence, I'm going to recommend you look into it because it becomes aidable. You bring an author in and you get aid. So.
Ms. Tobiasin, I'm the council chair for the School Library System and we just brought it back. So we will work on it for next year.
Okay, great, great.
We got you.
It, Middletown did belong back, I don't want to say the year. A lot of water's gone over that dam. But they did participate and there was some wonderful, wonderful experiences. So I urge you, yes.
Thank you, Ms. Tobiasin, Mr. Perino, did you have anything? Are you good?
Helps out with programs on the special months and she gets her staff to bulletin boards and set up reading materials and the whole bit. So both of you, Rachel and Emily, you do really a great job in the district.
Emily, don't you have an event tomorrow?
Well, Experience Our Programs.
Yes, we do.
We all have an event tomorrow.
Thank you, Mr. Rep and Mr. Perino. Ms. Romero, did you want anything?
Amazing job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I'm just going to piggyback a little bit on what Mr. Freddie Williams brought up because I think it's a very important point about, you know, the time to catch our scholars is young, you know, so, and it's easier said than done for many of our parents. You know, it's easy to say, you know, make sure that you try to read with your child or with your, with your scholar at a very young age, very early on, before they go to bed, what have you. But that's not easy sometimes for many of our parents, you know, who work at night. Some are, some of our parents have language barriers, you know, so the, the child speaks English, can read English, but the parent doesn't. But what we can do is find creative ways to still do the same thing, but in different ways. So, you know, if you're a Spanish parent out there who, or we have parents who, let's face it, they can't read or write. And that's not an embarrassment, that happens, that's part of life. But I think there's ways to be creative and maybe say to your, to your child, okay, you read the book and you tell me about it, that's how I learn about it. Or if there's a language barrier, you can read it in English and tell me in Spanish or any other language what it was about. So there's ways of being creative. So if parents out there are struggling to find time to be able to have their, their child be able to, to read at night or any, call us up, we'll find a way to make it happen.
I, I would actually encourage parents to come tomorrow to the library during Experience Our Programs because our K-12 librarians have put together a really fun, interactive activity where they'll get to taste many different books. And they can leave with a postcard with a QR code right to Sora, which is our digital book platform. So the books that they are tasting are all available online with their, you know, MIDI ID and as well as in the district libraries.
In multiple languages.
That's perfect. So I mean, even putting a presentation on our website for future use where it's just a tab that says ways to read at home, you know, and, and knowing that some parents are working at night, so they're not going to be there, some parents have the language issue, but food for thought. Thank you very much.
Sure, thank you.
We're going to stay up because we have another presentation.
Our Seal of Civic Readiness, all yours. I should be over there, you should be over here.
We have one more. We're going to ask Ms., Ms. Carrie Luba to join Ms. Longergan and I up at the stage as well as two of our scholars. Yeah, this is it. All right, so we'll talk a little bit about the Seal of Civic Readiness. So at Middletown High School, civic education is an essential component of every scholar's academic program. Teaching the importance of engaging in a democratic process is necessary to build a more engaged, active, future citizen and informed voter. We are in our third year of implementation of the Seal of Civic Readiness Program at Middletown High School. And under the leadership of Emily Longergan and Carrie Luba, our program continues to grow and impact our school and community in positive ways. Tonight, you'll hear a little bit about, from us about the program, but more importantly, you'll hear from our scholars about the direct impact they have made. The Seal of Civic Readiness is a formal recognition from New York State that shows colleges, admissions departments, scholarship committees and employers that recipients are engaged citizens who appreciate and celebrate the diversity of our communities, working together to solve social problems. SEAL recipients are empowered to identify issues and take action and be agents of positive change. We are so proud of all of our scholars and the many different ways they sought change this year. In our pilot year in 2023, 14 graduates from Middletown High School earned the Seal of Civic Readiness. Last year, 47 scholars earned the seal. And this year, we still have some presentations that have to go before the committee, but we project over 70 graduates will earn the Seal of Civic Readiness. And something that we're especially proud of is that approximately 25% of the graduates this year are scholars who are in special education programs or are English language learners.
Awesome.
The Seal of Civic Readiness requires scholars to earn six points demonstrating their civic knowledge and civic engagement. There are numerous ways in which a scholar can earn the Seal of Civic Readiness. The Capstone Project is the most intense, requiring scholars to identify and research an issue impacting their community, an issue in which they are passionate about, brainstorming and developing solutions and actually implementing those solutions to create change. We often end up calling these passion projects because that's what they become for our scholars. New York State and our team also recognizes that every scholar will have a different pathway based on their passions. Because of this, there are also independent pathways to earning the Seal of Civic Readiness. Scholars can earn points through experiences in elective courses, extracurriculars and work-study. An example might be a scholar who's passionate about an issue in their community and completes volunteer hours. They may be able to use that service learning experience to earn one of the six points towards the Seal of Civic Readiness. Because the pathways to the seal are so individualized, we encourage scholars to check in with the team, which they do, to determine the best fit. And we work with those scholars to figure out the best way for them to earn those six points. We are also very, very fortunate, and we thank you guys especially, to offer EDI to aid scholars after school as they work towards this incredible seal. So tonight, we're going to highlight some of the projects from this school year and we're going to have some scholars talk to you as well.
Hi, my name is Gabrielle Soto.
Hi, I'm Juliana Wilber.
And our other two members, Brianna Cleary and Yassira Martinez, are going to be here tonight, but we're the hygiene heroes and our project was a hygiene drive.
One of the issues facing not only our school community, but the Middletown community at large is homelessness. Almost 1,500 people in the Hudson Valley last year identified as homeless. Our solution to this issue was to do a hygiene drive to benefit recap shelter local to Middletown.
Through our drive, we were able to, sorry, collect a surplus of products that will benefit the lives of people not only living in recap shelters, but also anyone in need who visits recap shelters that are looking for resources. Through our project, we learned that it doesn't take much to make a difference. Our project brought us closer to our community and helped us tap into our creativity. We also learned how to better work with a group and grow our teamwork abilities to compose a good environment where ideas are able to flow and build creativity.
Hi, my name is Danielle Jones Jackson and I'm the creator of Busy Bags, which is that.
Busy Bags were a way for parents to focus on parent-teacher conferences while also keeping any kids that they had to bring with them to the conferences busy. They are bags filled with books and coloring sheets with crayons and stickers. All of the bags were donated by Midi's Love to Read. And the Busy Bags were also added to all of our cohort offices in the high school so that any PTCs, PTCs that happen throughout the year, we have Busy Bags available.
It really is.
Another one of our projects this year were buttons for lanyards and signage for our doors that were created in both English and any language other than English that our staff members speak, so that scholars who speak another language know who they can go to to speak to in their native language. And if anybody wants a pin for their lanyard, please let me know and we will have it made for you.
We've formed a lot of partnerships throughout the development of this course. This fall, we had a group that was very passionate about bringing knowledge and awareness about drug use amongst teens. So they partnered with our SROs and MPD and conducted a series of interviews and ultimately implemented an awareness campaign for scholars to take a pledge during lunch periods and to learn, they shared valuable statistics with our scholars regarding the dangers of drug abuse. One currently in action, one of our most successful projects so far this semester is Bags of Hope. Our scholars designed a project, a project in partnership with the Orange County Department of Social Services to build and design bags of travel hygiene products for children in foster care, an issue which is very near and dear to their hearts. The scholars worked very closely with Ms. Still Pineta at the Department of Social Services to make sure that these Bags of Hope get directly into the hands of foster children in our community. This project really took off. It was not only a high school effort, it became an entire district campaign. Educators and staff members across the entire Middletown School District donated items and bags for this project. It was so incredible to see all of the things, the emails that we kept getting, asking, are you guys still collecting? And the amount of boxes that we walked into the mailroom with our names on them. We cannot express our gratitude to our Middletown family for showing up. And if anyone would like to contribute, the girls, as they continue to put it together, are in need of travel size shampoo and travel size conditioners. That's like where they're falling a little short right now as they finish up their bags. So, okay, thanks.
Some of our other community-based Capstone projects this year included a Thanksgiving food drive that we did in the fall where our scholar collected enough food and turkeys to provide over 50 families with a full Thanksgiving meal. And we had Be the Reason Somebody Smiles, which is happening currently, and they are collecting donations, which is kind of a remix of the hygiene heroes, except these donations are going to honor specifically focusing on women and children in needs of goods. Carrie and I like props, as you will see. So thank you so much for your ongoing support of our scholar and the ever-evolving Capstone projects. And as a token of our appreciation, we have named you all honorary Capstonians. We would like to, thank you. And we want to give each of you a Capstonian cup. And in each cup, there are little snippets of some of our projects. We have Above the Influence stickers, Midi's Love to Read bookmarks, sample of a recipe from our upcoming Midi Cookbook, a sample of the coloring books from Danielle's Busy Bags, and Legacy Makers in All Language stickers.
Thanks so much, Carrie. Nice, Jess, awesome.
So thank you so much for your support.
You have several other Capstone projects that are featured tomorrow night at Experience Our Programs as well. So if you want to come on in, we'll be in here.
Thank you, guys. Awesome job.
Mr. Estrada, they mentioned product, you know, some of your projects. Could you inform the board perhaps, like, I know I have cosmetic bags, brand new ones, things like that, that we could donate?
Sure.
But ahead of time for some of these projects, that if we did want to donate, we could donate?
Absolutely.
And we know where to bring them?
Yes, we would appreciate any support, thank you.
And if you know, and if you know Ms. Tobiasin's travel arrangements each year, you know she's got a lot of nice bags.
I was going, I was going, I was going to say, I got you, I got you. Give, give me one week and put my ministry team on it first thing in the morning. Give me one week and we got, we got, we got some stuff for you.
Thank you so much.
Awesome, thank you very much, appreciate it.
All very much.
Thank you.
So now we'll move on to our next portion of our agenda. And I, I want to apologize to members of the public who had anticipated to speak to the board earlier, but I do thank you for your patience. Whenever we have student presentations, we do like to move them up in the agenda, knowing that they have to go to school early the next day and might have homework or tests to get ready for. So at this moment, the board will designate a portion of the meeting agenda for public comment for a period of up to 40 minutes. Each speaker will be allowed up to four, four minutes. The public is not permitted to discuss topics under matters involving specific individuals. Speakers must sign in prior to speaking and speakers are not permitted to cede their time to other speakers. And Ms. Avila? Thank you. Do we have any takers from the public who'd like to address the board at this time? No? Thank you very much. Any letters? None received by the board? Okay. So we'll move. Thank you, though.
Don't count on it.
Next up, our student board member report. Ms. Avila, it's all yours.
As much as this school, a lot of the sports have been having a nice season, not to like, you know, like a little tap on the shoulder, but the flag football team right now is undefeated, you know, 10 and 0.
What's your next game?
Tomorrow's senior night at, believe, 6 o'clock or 5:30. No, 6 o'clock, 6 o'clock, 6 o'clock. And so it's after Experience Our Program night, so a lot of our teammates are going to be a little tired, but we're going to still put in that energy that we have to put in. It's going to be against Newburgh. They're really tough guys.
Let's go, let's go.
Yes. And that, just, there's, there's, hasn't been a lot, you know, I've been like trying to do some things with Ms. Sheedy and Mr. Donahue of like having probably like little like outdoor lunches, like I said previous, but you know, there's like protocols that we have to go through. Because we want like kids to feel like special, because you know, not everybody is like the top 10% that's able to go on senior enrichments, but like, you know, getting a fresh breather of air, that's something I feel like a lot of people enjoy, but obviously it would have to be passed by the board. And from that, there hasn't been as much from the, from kids that have complained or whatever, but yeah, it's been, it's been settled these couple of weeks. Thank you. Yeah, so on June 4th, I'm going to the American Dairy Association, which is me talking about how if kids loved a school lunch, I don't know, now I'm joking, I'll, I'll be munching on, I'll be munching a little bit, a little bit, a little bit. If my friends were, like, if we had phones out, ugh, there was going to be a picture of me every single day eating that school food. But that's me, though, that's me, that's me. You gotta, you gotta take what's free, huh? But yeah, thank yous.
Thank you very much. I do want to- I do want to make sure that if we can begin the implementation of the process for, because I know Mr. Doma was part of it, Ms. Doma was part of it, the process to start for our student rep for next year, because we do want Ms. Avila to have some input in regards to that as well. So, all right, cool. We're gonna go on to our, because it was part of the part that we skipped, do our student presentations. We're gonna do our board member community updates at this time, so we'll go out to Mr. Moore to start us off.
Thank you. I'll be relatively quick with this one, but I just want to let everyone know, I had a very good conversation with Mr. Williams. He's a current volunteer firefighter here at Middletown, and they're in dire need for youth fire department volunteers. All prospective volunteers must be a Middletown resident, 16 and 17 years old. They must have their parent's signature for approval. Teens will go through a background check. And the junior volunteers must maintain a, a strong grades to keep volunteering. There's some great incentives as well. The first being that some of the students have an opportunity to gain valuable experience. Further, they are given to gain some great skills towards their career as a firefighter if they choose. And they even have retirement benefits and tax benefits as well, and retail discounts that are provided to those who are volunteering. There's a long legacy here, over 165 years, and they're looking to have, to continue that, but they definitely need the youth to take part. And hopefully, we can possibly make that happen by making this more aware. Thank you.
Thank you. And I'm sure that tugs right into Mr. Perino's heart. Mr. Perino's been a long advocate, and I believe you belong to one of the firehouses, right? Which one?
Excelsior.
Excelsior, so, thank you, Mr. Moore. Mr. Perino, it's all yours.
As Mr. Moore stated, there is a great need for volunteers. I remember when I started way back in the 60s, there was a waiting list to get in. Now, it's difficult to get people. I don't know all the reasons for it. No one does, but it's hard. But anyway, continuing on here, I'm sure, and I don't speak for the board, but I know we wish all mothers a happy Mother's Day, this particular, this Sunday. And what better way to celebrate Mother's Day, a couple of things? Number one, there's a pancake breakfast at the Elks Lodge from 8 to 12, so bring mom out, buy her breakfast, and then go from there. There's also raffles and a bake sale. Another way to celebrate Mother's Day, tomorrow, we're going to have a plant sale at the high school, and it supports the track team. This morning, when I say "we," Dan Higby graciously donated his time and bus. Myself, Linda Knapp, and Mrs. Rose, we went down to Pine Island and pick up the plants. And believe me, the, this, we've always had nice selections, but this is really the best selection. The person Ricky Polarchek, who used to work for the district, does a nice job and he treats the district very, very special with good prices and good plants. As a matter of fact, he had to go to New York today to pick up some items, but he waited until he supervised the selection of the plants. They grow all their own plants on the Polarchek farm. Continuing on here, I want to salute one of our members, the, the son of one of our members, Aaron Williams, Dominican College. And I know Bishop Williams picked him up last night, but done for the season, year. But the big thing is, he broke all records, track records in Dominican College, the 100, the 200, 300, 4, what is it, 4 times 1, John? But as a freshman now, and he ran against seniors from many, many schools. And so, I, I know as he goes on, he's going to set all kinds of records. And he's also doing very well in school, so congratulations to Bishop Williams and Sharonda Williams and Aaron Williams. Part of it all is good parenting and which John and Sharonda always do with their children. So, good deal there. This week, Teacher Appreciation Day, Nurses Appreciation Week, Teacher Appreciation Week. And I know we salute all our staff. We saw some excellent people here. And I just want to comment the last thing, I am just going to deviate a little here. I want to comment on the musicians tonight, especially the strings program. People on the board at the time when we started this, John, Ed, Rose, and myself, we had a hard time getting this through because there were people who said, well, Middletown, they're not going to do that, the kids aren't going to be interested, parents aren't going to be interested. Megan Gugliotta, who was here tonight, started with 25. Today, there's 270 or more participating in the strings program. We, we saw the results of it tonight, some of the results, just very great. And I'm done, I don't like to go over. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Perino. And we'll have more time during roundtable. It's early enough now, we'll be able to do some roundtable today. Mr. Rep?
Good evening, once again. I wanted to just call reference to the multicultural celebration we had last week. It was incredible. The turnout keeps getting larger and larger. We had so many people from the community, different cultures, you know, entertaining and dancing. We had musicians from the school. And it was just a really wonderful, as our buddy, Ms. Williams always referenced, too, it takes a community, and it takes a village. It was just very festive, it was just wonderful. And we want to give a shout out to the commu, the committee, team member, leader is Shadrack St. Louis. So we want to acknowledge him for the efforts that him and his team are doing to continue to make that grow. It's really special, it was really special. I also want to just call reference to, he was talking about the firefighters and the need, I believe the gentleman is Leighton, Leighton Williams? Yeah. So, I believe me and Ms. got some information to you about his name, so, and so I think, you know, we'll talk about reaching out to him. I'll get that number back to you. Oh, there you go. See? You see how this thing works here? Everybody working together. Teamwork makes the dream work. Anything else? What do we got? I just want to acknowledge this civic readiness thing. This is just, once again, wonderful things, the thinking outside of the box, giving kids other options to, you know, as, as it pertains to extracurricular activities outside the academic setting. You know, it gives them, you know, more energy to put into things that interest them and getting a better sense of how they can improve and help out in their communities. One of them that was very dear to me, and I like the ideal, is that hygiene, something, what did they call it? What was it? Yeah, yeah, hygiene heroes. I mean, you'd be amazed at how some kids and some students, they just don't have the means to get those hygienes. So just that type of thinking outside the box is wonderful. Let's keep up the good work. Way to go, Midi's. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rep. Ms. Tobiason?
Thank you, President Estrada. I'll make mine very short. It was really an honor and a privilege to attend last night's Mid Hudson School Study Council, where we had two of our board members represented. And that was Orange Sullivan Ulster and Duchess County, so I did appreciate that. And last but not least, on Tuesday night at the Common Council, our superintendent and our assistant superintendent, Mr. Tuttle, presented the budget at the Common Council meeting. I think what was very rewarding was to hear the comments from our mayor about the cooperation between the school district and the city of Middletown. I appreciated it, and I'm sure that others there did. So, good job, Mike, good job, Amy. And I hope you don't mind, I use their first name instead of saying Ms., but it was a very worthwhile evening. And I think that, you know, I'd like to be able to attend a couple more of the Common Council meetings, just to report back what activities are going on, or if there's a special event or something, like the community yard sale is coming.
Are you already volunteering to be the liaison to the city next year?
Hopefully, but we'll have to see.
Thank you, Ms. Tobiason. Mr. Freddie Williams?
Thank you. I have a couple of images.
Did you want to go last? I just remembered all of a sudden at the last minute.
Yeah, you threw me off. I was, I'm ready. I'm ready to go.
Okay, go ahead.
I have a couple of images that should be up, are coming up. So this is one image from this past Saturday, May 3rd, we had Parks and Rec and Middle, conjoined with Middletown School District, we had the Kids vs. Cops Second Annual Basketball Game. Yeah, Mitch. So Vice President Mitchell Williams jumped in, he hopped in, and he, you know, he works with Parks and Rec also, the boxing program, so he volunteered the referee. He was making some really good calls. Couple, couple bad ones, but mostly good. So it was an excellent time. The Modified Team was composed of 7th and 8th graders, there was eight of them, some from Mont Hagan, some from Twin Towers. And that's Coach Kevin Durellis from the YMCA, he volunteered his time to DJ, which he did an excellent job. So the modified game, the modified team ended up winning 56 to 55 over the police department. Yeah, it was an excellent game, came down to the wire. Modified was winning most of the time, MPD made a run, came back, took the lead with about a minute left, and then Modified had a steal layup, and they ended up winning the game. So excellent game. And then moving forward to the JV varsity level, they also caught a win, 60 to 52, I believe. So, Middletown went 2-0 versus MPD, so, and they were working. Let me tell you, next year, I think they're going to come with a little more firepower. Stevenson was out there, Mrs. Montry doing his thing. I was surprised to see him. But listen, it was a great event, so much support.
I think with, I think with Mr. Moore and Pastor Williams, we should have a board team.
It's, it's looking like that could, that can happen, right? And I'm glad you brought up Mr. Moore, because as I'm watching it, MPD had one female cop. And I'm thinking, and we have practices where we transition together, and I'm watching Mr. Moore walking with his team, young females, and I said, you know what? I'm going to sit with Drew, so next year, we got to do something for the females. Because female basketball is on a whole nother level right now, too. And I know that one female cop was like, okay, you know, these kids were like, you know, so, we're going to sit and talk, Drew, I definitely want to talk to you about that and get that rolling. Because I think that's a nice element to add, right? And it makes sense. So yeah, that was a great time, Middletown 2-0, and the MPD got something to work on. We were kind of teasing them a little bit, but, you know, might get a ticket or two. But it was a good time. Excellent, had great energy afterwards with the pictures and side conversations, it was just an excellent time. So, thank you, Middletown School District, thank you, Middletown Parks and Rec, Ray Lynn, Nikki Silines, and I'm going to miss a couple of people, but thank you all for your support and another great event. So we're looking forward to the one next year. And I think I have a couple more images, I believe.
Freddie, they did mention that at Common Council on...
Oh, they did?
Yes.
Nice. Did they get the right score? Because, I don't know. Okay, good. Just want to make sure that happened. Was there any more images? No, that's it? Oh, I'm looking for the barber shop images? Because I know that was a lot, I sent a lot of basketball ones. And if they're not, it's fine. So just like the, you know, I'm happy to announce that two Middletown seniors currently, current seniors are employed with me at my barber shop. I don't want to get his name right. Nasir Andrades. Help me out.
Andradez.
Andradez. I didn't want, I wanted to make sure I got it right. Nasir Andradez and Isaiah Carthy are two current Middletown seniors. And I had some images of them, but, you know, I'll probably throw them up next time, but they're officially state licensed as apprentice barbers, and they're doing an excellent job, and they're putting excellent time in, you know, so I'm enthusiastic about, you know, people that own businesses in the city of Middletown and beyond, you know, to pour into our kids, you know, if they have the opportunity, if you have an open space for employment or, or, you know, anything that can help them build their future or any kind of certification, then, you know, we should, we should kind of pour in. And I just want to shout out Mr. Mitchell Williams, me and him, this was kind of our project that we put together, and these, these guys are thriving. Also, Brian Cruz, Sean Castillo, and Mr. Evan Everton Brown also poured in and helped with the certification and the financial aspect to get these guys right. So I just wanted to mention that, and I'll have something more in roundtable. Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you, Mr. Freddie Williams. Ms. Romero?
I want to talk about Twin Towers.
Our diamond and our pearl, too.
No, not yet, later. I have some pictures to share for Twin Towers College and Career Day. Twin Towers hosted an annual career fair, headlined by Siobhan Lloyd, Twin Tower Middle School graduate and proud legacy maker. After listening to the keynote speaker, the 8th grade scholars had the opportunity to hear from a range of local community members about a variety of exciting career paths. A big shout out to Lorraine Anderson, that's Twin Towers Middle School Student Support Counselor, for organizing the meaningful event. Recently, Twin Towers, the Twin Towers Lighthouse Team had the opportunity to meet with their leader and me coach to reflect on the action items they've been working on throughout the year. This team made up of both educators and scholars continues to do incredible work together, and there's a lot of excitement to see the impact of their efforts. This week, Twin Towers Middle School held their spring concert, and it was a wonderful event. My son participated as a member of the chorus, and it was truly humbling to witness the incredible talents of our scholars. I'm proud and grateful to be part of such an inspiring district, so.
Look at you, you're up there.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
That was awesome. Thank you very much. Pastor Williams?
So I'm, before I get my image up, I, I want to piggyback real quick on Ms. Romero and Siobhan Lloyd. Those of us that have been around for a while know Siobhan. He was an amazing, amazing student here at Middletown. And, and the reason that excites me even, even tonight with the young, with our young scholars that came and performed tonight music, many, many of yous don't know that, that I studied music in college. That was, that was my, my area of studies. And so anything musically, it just excites me. But Siobhan, amazing young man, and just as a way of a quick passing story, my wife and I were flying back from Atlanta. In, in April, we were down at the National School Board Association Convention, and we were flying back, and we happened to sit down next to Siobhan's professor from Juilliard. And so we had, we had an amazing conversation with, with Siobhan's professor. He started, when we said that we were from Middletown, he began to talk about Siobhan. And so we just sat there the whole time and just had an amazing conversation. So he's making impact, and so that's some of the legacy that we have. And so riding on to that, if you could put up the image for me, last, I believe it was last Friday or Friday before last, we, our high school had an amazing performance of, and this is the cast picture, of some amazing young people who performed the 25th Annual, the musical, the 25th Annual Putnam County Spelling Bee. And, and the only reason that we have to put, we can only put up the cast pictures is because of copyright laws and copyright, you know, situations that we can't put up any of their performances. We miss out sometimes on some of the amazing performances of these young people. I have to say, I have to say that the quality of this musical was absolutely amazing. The harmonies, the strength, the, the acting, the performances overall... harmonies, the strength, the, the acting, the performances overall was absolutely amazing, and I would encourage any, anytime that any of our schools have performances like this, try to make your way and be in the crowd to be there, because we can't show, we can't show their performances because of copyright laws, we can't show their performances, we can't record them, we can't even really put pictures up, we can only do something like this, the cast picture. But I want to, I want to congratulate them on such an amazing performance on, on, on last week, it was Friday and on Saturday. And so, again, I encourage you, we got so many wonderful, talented, and gifted young people in this, in this district, and so let's continue to support them, let's continue to push them, they're going, they're going on to do great things, many of them should be professionals. In fact, some of the choreography was done by one of our very own scholars. So outside of that, I got some other stuff, maybe if I'm, if I'm still able to be here for Roundtable, I have something, something else I'll share, but I just needed to, I needed to put that out, especially in a night when we were celebrating the music programs, I don't want us to forget that we've got so much going on in the area of performance, the arts and, arts and, and performance, all those things are big right now, so, thank you.
Thank you, Pastor Williams. I'm gonna end mine with a, with a video, but first I do wanna acknowledge all of our teaching staff for Teachers Appreciation Week, you guys mean a lot to us, we could not obviously do any of this without all of our teachers out there. Ms. Creedon wanted me to remind everybody that the district is tomorrow for Teachers Appreciation Day, gonna buy ice cream novelties, which I'm told are ice cream bars, both dairy and non-dairy, for all employees in appreciation of all their hard work, and we'll be celebrating that tomorrow at each of the home schools. Did wanna not forget that we have some birthdays around the table, Mr. Freddie Williams, happy birthday today. Couple of belated birthdays, both Norma and Mr. Rett as well.
Whoa, my friend.
May seems to be a very big month, it's my mother-in-law's birthday today, too, so I can't forget that as well. So, you know, happy birthday to everybody as well. Before I get to the final part, I do wanna remind everybody, because our next meeting will be hopefully to ratify our school budget vote, which is May 21st, so I'd be remiss not to remind everyone about our school budget vote, which is on Tuesday, May 20th. The vote is open from 7:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. You can vote at either the Board of Education office, Truman Moon, the Annex at Truman Moon, or Presidential Park Elementary, but remember, you can't just show up at any one of the three buildings. You have, based on your address, need to go to one of those three sites. If you're not sure which of the three sites you can go to, we have a link on our website that you can hit, input your address probably, and then it'll show you where, where, it says where do you, where do I vote?
Under the Board of Education.
Under the Board of Education tab. You can also contact our district clerk, Mrs. Montry, at 845-326-1196. If we don't hear your voice, sometimes it gets drowned out by others, so we really need you to come out and vote on Tuesday, May 20th in regards to our school budget. We also have three board member seats available, there are four candidates for three seats this year as well. So I'm gonna move on and give kudos, as you know, the seat to my left, your right, if you're watching on, on live stream, has been empty today for our colleague, our Vice President, Mr. Mitch Williams, who had a really special day today, for those of you who don't know, Mitch has been an integral part lately of trying to build up a boxing program within the city of Middletown for many of our scholars and our students, whether they be male, female, and even now the adults as well. And he's been now hired and teaming up with the Middletown Parks and Rec Department to make that come to a fruition. Today was an open house, which is why he's not here today, at the location, which was 393 County Route 78, the Parks and Rec Building, out across from Maple Hill Park. So I wanted to run a video, it's about three and a half minutes long, I believe, and then a short video after that about what we saw today. You're gonna see some amazing kids, I can't believe how young they are and how fast they can box, so if we can roll the video, that'd be great. And then I wanted to show you the little clip of, like, 30 seconds from what happened today during the opening. I was just amazed at watching some of these young kids, I mean, real young kids, but how talented they looked in the ring, training a little bit, so we can run that 30-second clip. And I apologize, the video's me, so, doing it. And those are our, our kids, you know, so that, that's what it's all about. We wanna thank Middletown Parks and Rec, and Ray Lynn Berthoff, and Nicole Sarakis. So I encourage all of you out there that if you're interested, no better way to get your cardio going than, I'm gonna, they even at one time had couples boxing, and my wife said, why don't we go? I don't know how to take that, but nevertheless, maybe we'll, maybe we'll be doing that. So thank you, guys, for letting me the extra couple of seconds over there. So we'll move on to our board member conferences or professional, any shareouts?
Do we have public participation? I noticed that.
We did.
We did.
Okay.
Yeah, we did.
No, I noticed her.
I know, I was, I was waiting, in case she wanted to come up.
Yeah, okay.
So, did you wanna say anything? Are you good with the report that you gave? You're good? All right. Good luck tomorrow, by the way. So any other, anything about conferences first, before we get into our, any other updates at the end?
No.
So move on to any committee reports, construction updates? Do we have anything?
Yeah, the safety.
Safety, okay, absolutely.
I think, Ed, this is a, part of the presentation, we had a facilities committee report, and Bill presented this, and it was very good, so I asked Bill to present this at the board meeting.
As you know, this is directed? Constructed. So, we have a blank screen. There we go. And this is another, this is the aerial view of it, the three boxes in red are the new addition parts to the existing building. The one that's at the top of the screen is a section you'll see later in the presentation with the steel structure going up, once that section's completed, the lower one in the right-hand side will be next. I would anticipate that to begin within the next two to three weeks, and then the final little, there's a physical fitness spot, the lower left-hand corner there, that little, the smaller section there will be the finals, final part of this construction project. This is just a view of some of the existing building where it's been renovated, they're getting to this point, as you can see, the sheet rocks going up, the ductwork, the electrical, so it's getting to the point where it's getting, all the things that are behind the wall and above the ceiling are being completed, and they're beginning to put the sheet rock in, and so it's coming right along, another larger section of that. Of course, when you start these projects, there's a lot of work, and you gotta get out of the ground to start with, and this project, we're putting a whole new electrical service entrance into this building, and this just represents all the wires, all the piping, all the conduit coming into this building, it's really quite undertaking. At some point in the future, once this is up and all constructed and put together, we'll actually cut over the building from the existing service entrance to this new entrance, so it's just interesting to see those things. This here is, you've probably seen this driving by, this is the foundations and the weatherproofing that's going on. This is a picture of our mechanical room, so we had those 185 geo-wells that were installed a couple of summers ago, and this is the equipment that it'll take to run that and to use that, that geo-sourced heat throughout our building. So this is just a picture of that, it's really quite impressive, I think on the 29th, we have a walkthrough scheduled for you guys, you're gonna wanna see that, because in person it's, it's really quite remarkable. A little more to do with that, some electrical, you know, the controls that go along with it as well. You've, I hope you've seen this driving by, it's pretty exciting when you start to finally get out of the ground, we get some steel going up, and that started on, I think it was Monday, April 7th, they made a lot of progress in a hurry, they got the first couple of floors together, then they had to square it all up, weld things solid, put the decking on, and then they put the second level on, they've been doing that this past week. So we're at this point, you're literally four floors up at that point, that's your top level, that'll be the roof in a few months. So it's, it's just pretty exciting to see. If you haven't had the chance, this is what our courtyard looks like today, I was mentioning this picture, almost looks like a rendering, but that's exactly it, that's the courtyard now, we have a little M in there for our own branding, and once we get on in, and the rest of this building's been retrofitted out, it'll be an opportunity and a space that can be used, but it's exciting to see some of these things as they go along. And this is just a rendering of the side, if you're standing in the field, you're looking at the cafeteria in this picture, and over to your left is the physical education portion that's yet to be built, these two locations are, are the next two phases, but, and of course, if there's any questions or whatever, you're always welcome to reach out to us through this spot on our website. We've got other things going on, you may have noticed, the food service storage building has started, they prepped the site for that, we took down some trees, removed the garage, and we're getting things set up for that, and we've even had a meeting this past Tuesday with Town of Wallkill, just to go over some future projects that we have in, in the works, and so there's a lot going on, and it's exciting, it's a great place to work, we really enjoy it. Any questions?
Awesome. Any questions, I remember that we'll have a chance to visit the site at the end of the month, too.
That would be a good idea.
Mr. Perino?
I, I, Ed, you brought this up.
6:30 on May 20, I'm sorry?
5:15 to 6:30.
So 5:15 to 6:30 on May 29th is when we'll have the.
Yeah, I was gonna men, I was gonna mention that, that date, so, no, it's a good idea, and I just wanna say, just a couple of things about this whole project. John and I, Bishop Williams and I were on the committee, and we kind of insisted that the staff get what they want in this building, and, and pretty much that has, that has happened, because I've been involved in too many construction projects throughout the years for the district, where the staff wasn't really consulted that much, which didn't turn out too well. So this is, this is good. The second thing, construction's not easy on staff or students, that's for certain, but the company has done everything possible to minimize the, minimize the, I'm gonna call it the trauma of construction, because it's, it's pretty tough. I haven't heard, I, I've talked to the, the, the last concert I went to, I talked to some of the administrators, and really the staff, I wanna compliment them, they're bearing up very well through this whole construction process, and again, thanks to Bill, and I know Kevin Witt is publicizing what's going on and taking photos and so on, so, good enough. Thank you. Thanks, Bill.
Thanks, Ms. Perino. I know last year there was some impact towards the end of the school year last year, right? But there, there will not be this year, so that's a good thing. All right, thank you very much, Bill, appreciate it. Any other Board of Education committee reports?
Now, the Audit Committee is meeting Wednesday, June 4th, correct, at 5:30, at the 5 o'clock correction.
Which is the day before our school board meeting.
The Audit Committee is meeting Wednesday, June 4th, at 5 o'clock at the Board Office.
Which is the day before our school board meeting, right? June 5th is, okay. Thank you, Mr. DeBaisen, Mr. Perino?
Policy.
Oh, Mr. Rett?
Policy Committee meeting is May 15th, that's a Thursday, at 5:30.
Thank you, Mr. Rett. Mr. Perino?
Yeah, just in relation to the facilities committee, I, I think the, we all have to understand and the, make the public aware, the taxpayers aware, that, you know, what we do in Middletown is try to, in fact, we succeed in keeping the buildings in excellent condition, there's a lot of preventative maintenance that goes into these buildings when the student is, when on vacations, and, and after school, and so on, and Mr. Bartlett outlined, outlined all those, what's happening, whether it be the floors being. outlined, outlined all those, what's happening, whether it be the floors being braised or the filters and the HVAC systems being changed, on and on. And, you know, the, one of the head custodians at Presidential Park, Joe Smith, said, you know, I tell the, the people who work with me, we want to keep the buildings as new as possible. In other words, just when we, the students moved in, keep them as spotless as possible. And the guys do a great job with us, too. That's one thing. The other item is, we had a safety and security meeting, and Bishop Williams was president at that meeting. One of the big things, two of the things that came out of this meeting, number one, Lenny Zapka, the Director of Securities, is working on a digital floor plan with all the other districts. So, everything, the, God forbid, there's some type of an emergency, the, um, the emergency responders would have a floor plan of not only our, our district, but the, the other districts. They're working in concert on this. And the company CRG is doing this. The other thing, this is a kind of a biggie, too. There's a, and I, I think Mr. Mike Tuttle was involved in this, I know he was, the visit to Schenectady Schools to see a new program, a new program to facilitate entering the building in a, in a quicker manner, so to speak. They, they have an advanced metal detector and bag X-ray machine. And I, I believe members of the district are going up to see that on, when is the date? May 15th, 16th?
16th.
Sticks in my mind. So, uh, very good. And I'm sure we'll get a report on, on that when they return. So, it's kind of a, it is a very new system, and we'll see the cost and so on as we go on here. That's, that's the committee reports.
If I can add to the committee report real quick.
Thank you, Mr. Perino.
To add to the committee report, in, in respects to what Mr. Perino talked about, too, is as it relates to our construction, to our construction, you know, just to dispel some of the misinformation sometimes that gets out, you know, many of the projects that we have done have been at minimal to, to no impact to the tax base. And so, most of, many of our projects, I, I, how, how, what's the percentage of aidable, the aid that we receive?
Eighty-nine point nine.
Eighty, eighty-nine point nine?
Yeah.
Eighty-nine point nine percent. I mean, that's huge for us to be able to do a project of this magnitude, especially at Twin Towers, which, which is highly needed to make sure that, that building is able to, to keep us in a place where we are relevant to the times and to the, to the, you know, the growing, the growing, you know, student population and community population that we have, I think is, is huge. And so, you know, I just want to, I want to dispel sometimes some of the, the negative, negative statements that are put out there. And, and know that it's very, a very small number. But again, as I said earlier, this district goes above and beyond to make sure that we are fiscally sound in the things that we do. Because at the end of the day, it's all about our scholars and our families and our stakeholders. And so, I'm excited about watching the school that I went to, you know, as, as a middle schooler. It was at junior high school then. I'm excited about watching it, watching the, the construction and watching, I'm, most of you know, I, I live right there. And so, to, to watch the steel go up is just exciting to me. And to, and to, to be able to have a glimpse into what the, into what it's going to look like when it's completed, I can't wait. I can't wait. So, I, I know, if you got questions, if you got questions, if you got things that you don't understand, things that you, that, that, you know, all of us are not professionals in construction, ask the questions. Don't, don't put out rhetoric or misinformation. Ask the questions. Go to the horse's mouth and ask the questions, you know? And, and, and I promise you, you'll get the information that you want and the information that you need. So.
Thank you, Pastor Williams. Well, just as a reminder for anybody who out there who's, who's wants to question it, the public voted for it. So, the public voted for those capital improvements. Any other committee reports before we move on? Yep, Ms. Romero?
Um, I have pictures I want to share. It's for diamonds and pearls. We hosted our last, our final ladies' night out event of the 2024-2025 school year. And as always, it was a wonderful time spent with incredible, with an incredible group of ladies. One of the highlights for me, aside from the delicious food, was creating vision boards together. I hope all of our attendees enjoyed the event as much as we enjoyed hosting it. And we're all just wishing all these young women with purpose and power, a great summer until we meet again next school year.
We didn't have any male crashers?
No, thank God.
Yeah. Kurt and I were banned, right? We were banned.
Me and John were banned by Ms. Romero there.
Yeah.
Any committee reports, Andrew or Freddie? No? We'll move on to a board member roundtable, and we'll start in the opposite direction tonight. Mr. Freddie Williams, you can start us off.
That works. Thank you. Um, I'm going to start with a salute and shout out to, um, Mrs. Camille Adoma and Tiffany Hall with the CK LA program that we've supported. So, I'm super happy that, about this program. And, um, they've done multiple presentations. It's just so important to catch the kids so, you know, at that level. And that program is gonna be awesome for us. That's gonna be starting this upcoming school year, right, Camille?
Yes.
Yeah. Yes. So that is, that is awesome. I'm so happy to hear that. And it just adds on to everything else. Middletown checks so many boxes on so many levels. So, I'm happy about that. Um, I wanted to circle back about the basketball event, because I left some people out. Um, the Middletown Athletic Department, Mr. Dave Coats and Mr. Kevin Gleason was on site, and he did an amazing job. Yeah, I think that day there was the Middletown Basket, Kids vs. Cops, and then there was a lacrosse game, and then I think there was a softball game also. Um, so it's just seeing the facility so busy and everything was just on point. So, a shout out to the Athletic Department. Shout out to the coaches that coached that day. Um, Coach, he's a JV Coach, Daniel Grant. He's also an security aide for us at Twin Towers, awesome guy. Also, he was, uh, took Middletown to the state championship, 2015, Ed, I think, right? Something like that?
Yeah, I think.
To the, like, the state championship. Yep. As point guard, he was the best point guard in the state that year. And he, you know, he returned back to Middletown, he's pouring into the kids.
I say that we won the public school.
Yeah, exactly. We won the public school. We were the best public school in New York State, which, which says a lot. Um, so him and then also Coach DeWitt Dulson, he's also with our custodial staff at Maple, I believe. And he was also an assistant modified coach this year. So these guys stepped in for Coach Harrison, who's a varsity coach, Coach Rose, Coach Hamilton, who's a freshman coach, and Coach Marcus Rett. My man, he's an awesome guy. While they were on a coaches retreat kind of forum at Iona College. So, it's always next man up. And that's what I love about the district is, is, there's a lot of moving pieces, but there's also, also people ready to step up and, and lead. So that was, I wanted to give them a special shout. And I think there was something else, but it's been a long day. And, uh, I'll write it down and get to it next time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Freddie Williams. Mrs. Romero?
I don't have anything. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Pastor Williams?
So I just wanted to jump in because I, I talked about the music, but I just wanted to jump back in and just kind of piggyback again, back up on two things that were mentioned tonight, um, with the, the fire department and, and then with the, the police game, the police and the students, the students, the basketball game. For, for those who, who don't know, I also do some chaplaincy. Uh, I train chaplains. I train chaplains. We have a fully accredited, fully accredited state, state, state authorized, um, uh, chaplaincy school where we train chaplains in the areas of law enforcement, chaplaincy, all kinds of different areas. But I do some chaplaincy with both the fire department at times and, and with various police departments in the region. And so, it's, you know, it's exciting to hear certain things that are happening in the community. I encourage, I want to, I want to double down on, on Mr. Moore, Mr. Moore's announcement to double down because it's much needed. It's much needed, volunteers in the, in the, in the fire department. And then, as far as the basketball game is concerned, I, I get in trouble sometimes because the police department tries to recruit me to play with them. But the reality, the reality is that I, I refuse because I'm, I believe Middletown, Middletown. So, I can't play with them. But maybe, maybe, maybe Mr. Moore, Mr. Moore and I will do something, do something next year, next year. And maybe we get Mr. Uh, Mr. Freddie Williams back out in the court to, he used to have, he used to have a pretty decent jump shot.
I just trained. I just trained now. That's it. I trained my son and these kids.
Shooting, shooting is like riding the bike, bro.
Yeah, my shirt's, uh.
Shooting is like riding the bike, Joe. But you get to that. But there's big things going on and a lot of good things. We're coming down to the end of the school year, and, and this is a very much a celebratory time. But I, I don't want anybody to think that our eyes are not, are not on the prize and the things that's, things that's going on. There's always work to do. I made a statement the other night, and I wanted to quantify my statement. I said, I said something about, it was not, it, it was, it's not necessarily bad that we, that we are identified in certain things. And, and that doesn't mean that it's okay. It just means that we have to always recognize that we've got to remain sober and vigilant and diligent in the fact that there is always work to do. No matter what we do, there will always be work to do because we're living in changing times. And so, I want to say thank you to the board. Thank you to our teachers on this Teacher Appreciation Week. Thank you to all of our, all of our instruction staff, administrators, all of those that play a part in, in, in teaching and nurturing our young people. This is your time and we celebrate you. Our young people are not our, not just our future, they are our now. And so, we've got to stay, we've got to stay on the wall, continue to work, continue to push, continue to do what's best for our children and for our community. They are our, our children are our most precious commodity, our most precious commodity. And so we have to continue to pour into them. So, thank you.
Thank you, Pastor Williams.
President Estrada, can you circle back? Because I, um,
Yep.
Denise said that the images were up for the barbers. I just wanted to kind of give them just a look.
Yes.
If I could, just for two seconds.
Are they, can we?
Tech, if, yeah, we can get the images back up. Yep, so we have, that's, I, um, Nasir Andradez? Andradez? I'm getting, I'm getting there.
Roll that R, you gotta roll that R.
Yeah, yeah, I gotta roll it. I gotta get my roller out. Um, and, uh, Mitchell Williams, he was actually cutting, um, Mr. Mitchell Williams at the time, and Isaiah Carthy. So that's in, that's Six West Barber Shop. That's where they're currently employed. I'm just so proud of these guys. I've seen the growth since last year when they started us till now. So, thanks for finding the pictures, Tech. And, uh, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Avila.
Uh, to like feed in what Pastor Williams said, us kids, you know, as much as like we love academics, you know, just like appreciating the teachers as well because they, I don't know how they do it. I always like thank them and like smile at them, at least make their day. Because having like four to five classes, every, each student has a different personality. It's just very hard. And then as well as like, I just want to like have like students like as reminders to like, you know, as much as your day is stressful, their day is stressful, staff days are stressful because like, like almost like 2,000 personalities and 3,000 personalities in one school. And then it's just a lot. And even so, as a student, oh, this is like how I like said in the beginning about like my path of like finding ways to like give like those recognition. If you guys have like ideas that are like obviously free, because not everybody got that type of money, but free to have like recognition for those other kids that are doing well academically, but not just in that, just being good students in general. I would love to take that idea so I can like further on because, you know, everybody deserves some type of appreciation if it's not academically. Because not everyone could do that. And also athletically, because there's always some situation. Um, and yeah. Oh, I, hopefully you guys got the email, but their rhetoric class is having their symposium. I'm in that rhetoric class. I don't know if you guys want to be there. But, you know, those are other ideas that you would get that can also help like the community and the school as well.
When is that?
I believe May 22nd.
Okay.
I'll, I'll, they're gonna send the, you're gonna see the Google invite. Don't worry.
Thank you, Ms. Avila. Mr. Bison?
Thank you, President Estrada. Uh, this Book of Poems for Everyone by Jason Reynolds is one of the most powerful because I've been looking through it as I read. And I know that other board members have mentioned teacher appreciation. Um, I just wanted to share something. I did not write this, but I think it recognizes our teachers in a very good way. It says, rarely does someone get to influence a person's life in a positive way for a lifetime as a teacher can. Fostering optimism and confidence, providing knowledge that leads to success, and being a good role model. As teachers have, and as teachers you are, and teachers you will be forever. And I think the board has emphasized our thanks to our teachers during Teacher Appreciation Week. Those are my thoughts.
Thank you, Ms. Bison. Mr. Rett?
Shout out to all the teachers, Teacher Appreciation Week. And also, um, good luck to all the candidates that are running for the next election.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rett. Mr. Perino?
You know, this has been a wonderful meeting. We now have three new candidates for the Middletown Fire Department. I'm gonna pick up locations for Bishop Williams, Kurt Rett, and Drew Moore, since you spoke about the,
All right.
The fire department in the need.
Just make sure if my house is on fire, that those aren't the three that are.
And I, I want to thank our district clerk, Crystal Marcherie, for helping to publicize getting in contact with Kevin Witt. And Kevin Witt for getting the plant sale on the, on the video boards. It happened very quickly. Unfortunately, I was picking up the plant, so I, Kevin and I sort of missed each other. So I shouted out to Crystal, hey, can you help here? And she really did it. And I can't say enough about Crystal's work. She's doing an excellent job in so many, in so many respects. And that's a person who's really grown with her job. And she's become an accomplished district clerk at this point. So, so thank you for your service and what you do for the district.
Thank you, Mr. Perino. Mr. Moore?
Thank you. Uh, I'll be pretty quick, but this is something I wanted just to bring up and echo, you know, my fellow colleagues about Teacher Appreciation Week this week. I had the opportunity to speak to several teachers over the last couple of weeks, and their stress level has been extremely high. And And just the ability to have to reset every day and to come into the building and just to be able to still continue to, you know, have that passion. So I just want to give them an opportunity to say, listen, we do appreciate you and continue the good work as we close out the next five weeks, I believe.
Right.
Five weeks. And this also leads into something that I've been noticing, especially coaching, but I'm also noticing around just a lot of the young adults that we see lately, and the importance of positive body language. It's something that is extremely lacking amongst the community and this probably nationwide, that a lot of the kids are experiencing a lot of trauma, and they're not able to effectively communicate. But they don't realize that their body language is another form of communication. And it's, it shows not only a lack of confidence, but also creates a barrier that creates a, you know, uncooperative behavior that they may not be noticing. So this is something I wanted to bring up, especially to the parents. You know, although they may not tell you everything, but their body language does say a lot. So try to pay attention to it and try to encourage them to have, you know, a positive body language and attitude, especially outside and definitely on the courts and on the fields. There's things that I've been noticing that I definitely wanted to speak up on. And just hopefully, if we can all collectively come together and be able to have that conversations with the young adults that could be able to create a more positive learning and language that they can actually see going forward. So that's pretty much it. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. And I'll finish it up. There were two birthdays I did forget. Stevenson Monchere has a belated birthday, I believe, right? And Mr. Lenny. Lenny, our security head, right, was yesterday, I believe. So happy birthday to them as well. I do want to thank Mrs. Creedon for the flowers, for Mr. Perino and me for our event from yesterday. I'm assuming, John, that yours is gonna go to Alice, and this will go to Lisa because they're the ones who kind of steer the ship while we're out here doing this. So thank you. It's very much appreciated. Let's not forget, we really didn't mention it a lot today, but Experience Our Programs is tomorrow. It is probably the largest event of the school year in showcasing our K through 12 programs right here at the high school from four to seven. It will be a packed house, I'm assuming, like it usually is, though we're experiencing, I think it's supposed to be heavy rain tomorrow, right? Throughout the day. So regardless of that, come on out, support your students and their programs. And I'm gonna finish it off just with vote, vote, vote. May 20th. It is a week from Tuesday. Come on out. I can't tell you to vote for the budget or against the budget, but please know that sooner or later, we all pay the piper. And if we don't invest in our children now, we will unfortunately have to invest them on the backside. So let's do it the right way. Good luck to all those candidates who are running as well. And I was reminded, Ms. Avila, and her birthday this week was 18 years old. So she will be voting for the first time. And I encourage all of our scholars who have turned 18, encourage them to vote as well. And again, contact our district clerk's office or their website for locations on where you can vote on Tuesday, again, from 7:00 a.m. until 9:00 p.m. God bless everybody. I'll need a motion to adjourn. Our next board meeting will be on Wednesday, May 21st. Motion by Mr. Bison, seconded by Mr. Rett. Any for the discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Have a wonderful evening, everybody.